Automatically started. You can get it again. No, no, I don't.
Welcome everyone to our work session. At four four. We'll go ahead and move to one point two for roll call. Can I say your name if you could say President? Will.
President.
Leslie.
President.
Ben.
President.
President as well. And move on to approval of the agenda for the work session. Was there a motion?
Some connection. Agenda for the work session.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Call it a favor. And moving on to the special items. Brian.
Yeah, wel- welcome everyone. And for the, for the board, I guess specifically, you'll see a, a number of additional items for your work sessions. I've been wanting to do this for a while, but tonight, as I, I think everybody knows, but in case you forgot, tonight at six o'clock, the city council will be joining for the regular session and the, really the purpose of that, I'll say this again when they're here though, is just to build relationships and to open up the line of communication to what at least I see, and I think a number of us see is the two kind of governing bodies of the community. The way that'll work is I'll give my superintendent's report, Jolynn will give kind of a city manager report and just open it up to general dialogue and discussion wherever it takes us. We'll discuss all the time, so I was asking Ron and Carissa, if we were planning this agenda, if we can move a number of the reports into the work session. So essentially your regular session has very little of an agenda, right? It's mostly the city council report. We'll sell high school leadership, we'll sell the consent agenda, but mostly just city council and things, so. Tonight's work session, I'm excited for you to hear from the schools. They're going to present the hard work that they're leading their staffs through. Hopefully you'll see how my goals flow directly from what the schools are working on and help guide and drive what the schools are working on. It'll see financial update. And then two reports we have to give annually are going to give, create guidance, Darrell will do, and are going to do in point two, which I'll do. Then we have a bond update, I'm not sure if we'll still have time for discussion there. We also thought that might be something city council being interested in, so the bond update is in this agenda, but also could be used for topic of conversation when city council's here and Mark from Brit will be here in a little bit, so. The last piece, and then I'm going to turn it over to Darrell, let it kick off the school presentations. If you remember last time, Carissa led us through kind of some activities that are associated with social emotional learning. And sort of the sequences goes in are inclusive welcome. Then we try to have engaging words throughout the, our time together and then an optimistic closure. So we're going to model that again, Darrell's going to kick us off with the inclusive welcoming, inclusive opening, and I will close this with the optimistic closure and hopefully in between you can engage in the, the work we're doing, so. Max, if you can fire up the, the canvas slide and Darrell, I can take it over to you to start us off.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Awesome. Thank you.
So part of our commitment to social emotional learning in the district has really been a large focus on adults and thinking about how we show up every day as learners, I know he'll get to it.
Get.
It's okay, Matt, no pressure, it's all fine for you. But it's how we show up every day as learners, both as adults and as students in the classroom. So we know that when we come into a space, whether it's this space or whether it's a classroom space, whether it's our building space, we come with emotions. Like right now, we're coming with all the things that have already happened today. We're bringing those with us to this meeting. And so it's just an awareness of, self-awareness is one of our standards that we're working with our students. So just being self-aware of where we're at right now, but also being aware of how we want to be during our learning. So where we're at right now and where we want to be at the end of the learning today. So what we're going to do is we're going to do kind of a little dipsticks, if you will, just kind of where you're at right now. And all the things that have happened today. And then how you want to be as a learner during this meeting today. And at the end, how do you want to feel when you walk out of this board meeting today? So there were some, there's some emojis on the board, so what I'd like you to do, and I'm going to give you a couple of minutes to think about this, and then we're going to, going to do a quick share. It's just kind of where are you, where are you at right now with your emotions, how are you feeling? But then the real question is at the end of this meeting, how do you want to feel? So you're going to choose one of those emojis.
You don't want to feel, you don't want to feel like Max where.
Max, you're, I'm going to need the stress emoji right now, right here.
Keep talking. Which, which one of the principles put in the instant animations or whatever that is, the auto slide advance?
It's back of the day.
Oh, it says, it's on five seconds. Maybe y'all could just think about, you know, if, an emoji you use on your phone, you don't have to choose the ones here, but just, and I really like that Darrell framed this, it's like, how do we want to feel at the end of the meeting and how, how, how can we kind of influence that ourselves?
Well, I think one of the things that when we work with students who struggle with executive functioning, so they, they have trouble seeing like the outcome and then kind of working backwards and that really causes a lot of challenges, so. I guess one of the things that I maybe will challenge you as you're thinking about your emoji is kind of like, what do you want the end of the meeting, the end of the evening tonight to feel like? And then you're going to work backwards from there and think about what are the things that we need to do as adult learners to make sure that our, we reach our outcome. So, okay, we have the emojis. Thank you, Max. So take a look at those emojis and if you need any help with what they mean, you have to ask somebody younger than me. Jacob, he's younger than me, Jacob, you can come too. Pick one of those emojis and then we'll just do a quick share out of how you want to feel at the end of the meeting today. I'll go ahead and start, I'll take us off. I like the, like the party confetti. Because I feel like I want to, I want to I want to celebrate the success of our district, I want to feel like I'm walking away and there are things that I feel really good about that. Yeah, but I want to celebrate, think about as we go into this week and into the month until we meet again. So I would choose the, I choose the party, right? What about Jennifer?
I would choose the star eyes. Ever so much of these meetings about how everybody's doing their part and how we come together to make our district successful. We're doing a lot of good things right now, a lot of heavy things, a lot of good things. It's exciting.
Thank you, best friend. I'm going to choose the heart. Because I just, I love our schools, I love our kids and our administrators, you guys all know that, I keep saying that. But we don't realize how good we've got it. And how wonderful, how we just, but I, I know a lot of educators in other schools and I hear what's going on. And we're doing pretty darn good. So, art.
I'm going to cheat a little bit too. Sometimes when I hear all the work going in our schools, I get oh, overall it's not very work, man, that's a lot. So I'm going to pick a yoga person because at the end I want to have some relaxation techniques. But I also want to have the, the smiley face with the sunglasses on. Because that to me is like, like we got this, you know, and I, and I know with our leaders here today, even though we have a lot of hard work to do, that, that they got it and we got it and that's good stuff to do.
So we have two, what do you think, huh?
Yeah, many as you want.
Many as you want.
So right now going into the meeting, I feel like I'm the happy face in the middle. And then hopefully at the end, I feel like the thumbs up, like we're going in a good direction.
I will take the strong arm, I'm here to get to work and we'll get some stuff done and hopefully we're productive and I'll feel really good when I come out of this and nice and strong.
I would take the thumbs up, I want to leave here feeling like all the issues and projects, things we're doing are moving forward like we want them to and we like them to. I want them to, to feel like our kids are getting the best of us. And we're getting the best of them and I want to feel like our staff is enthusiastic and excited and motivated and I want to feel the same.
I think I am the middle smiling face. I think I was pretty great. And then by the end of the meeting, I'd like to do the little party confetti thing. Because provided for this joint session and I hope everybody leaves feeling like they've got something good for this meeting today.
I'm kind of the generic smiley face with teeth there in the corner. So that's kind of, that's kind of my state of being most of the time, so. And also listening to all this stuff, I still things are moving forward and exciting to see things inside and outside the building, it's moving forward, so. We're going in the right direction.
Thank you. All right, thank you everybody for participating, did you guys want to join in?
I think as a team you feel very thumbs up.
Okay, as a team they're very thumbs up, I like that. I appreciate everybody sharing that, and I think one of the things that I noticed as we went around is that we all are coming to this meeting with just feeling like the, we want different things for the outcome, we want to yeah, we, we want to, we want things, I don't really start to be right here, but say, at the end of the meeting, like, all these things that we want are a little bit different for each one of us, but I think that that's okay. I think we all have different strengths and so I think that it's going to be good, so thank you for doing that with us. All right, so now is the really good exciting work that we are going to talk about today. The schools are here today to present the work that they are doing. All the work that they have been doing, of course, are tied back to our strategic plan, it guides the work that we do in the district and you will hear a lot of the things that they are saying, you'll be able to tie them back to the different priorities that we have on here. One of the things, Max, if you want to just go to the next slide. One of the things that we're always thinking about is are we keeping our promise? Are we keeping our commitment to our community, are we keeping our commitment to our staff? And mostly are we keeping our commitment to our students that we're showing up every day with this promise that we are going to give them, as Brian said, the past, like a world-class education, right? That's what our goal always is to be the very best and we just want to make sure and we're always checking ourselves, are we keeping that promise? And we use the staircase all the time to see if we're keeping our promise. At the top of the staircase is our, our strategic plan, which is what we call our ideal state. So that's where we want to get to that ideal state where we are we're making, all the commitments that we are keeping are on that document. And to do that, we use the staircase so that we can make sure that we have attainable action steps all along the way. One of the things that the schools do, they set they set goals that they check about every quarter and then they check the progress on those goals, they keep the goals, they come up with new goals so that they can always show that they are moving up, moving up the steps to that ideal state. So that's one of the things that you'll hear from them today is the work that they have been doing, the goals they've been setting, how they're tracking those goals and then the outcome of those goals. And so I want to turn the time over to them to get started to talk about the great work that they're doing. And they just do, Marjorie first, or Kim Marjorie's first?
Two, two more slides for. Thank you.
Okay, so this is, these are some of our newest students, our newest kinder students and on the left there you see our new climbing structure, the blue dome, which the kids are loving, especially the littles and it makes them very happy, we want our students to be happy and proud. So they're very happy when they're on the climbing dome and most of the time at recess. And now we'll share some of the things that we're doing to empower our students. All right, so one of the actions we're doing is providing the ongoing ECKRiE training and coaching for teachers in grades K two. This is our second year of full implementation with fidelity. And it's our third year, the first year we did it, it was just kind of piloting before we had actually had the, the training sessions. So we're providing that throughout the year, so we have a nationally certified trainer who comes into the school and she provides modeling, coaching and just provides a bunch of support for the teachers who are in the class. We're also observing a hundred percent of teachers in all grades during literacy instruction with continued focus on student engagement, engagement, which we had started last year and was like our main focus with of our professional development. So our leading indicator is that a hundred percent of teachers in grades K two are using ECKRiE with fidelity during walkthroughs. So we just had our first round of walkthroughs at the end of September and we went and observed every teacher in K two and we have a specific tool that we use that guides us through that process to make sure that they are implementing with fidelity. And then we also observe a hundred percent of teachers in grades three through five using engagement strategies that they had learned last year during their vocabulary instruction, we have an explicit vocabulary routine, so we went through and observed a hundred percent of the teachers doing that routines as well and providing feedback. Our lagging indicator will be our end of year devils and our ELA in I ready, so devils is it's like our universal screener for reading, so that tells us if kids are reading with accuracy, fluency and if they're able to segment, segment the sounds and all of those foundational skills. Another action is to meet with our instructional prep coach, Brian DeWolf. And we met with him to plan a focus for math PD, so this year we're really going to spend a little more time focusing on math. And we, he just provided the first session of the math PD to teachers on last week, last Wednesday. And our job then is to go and observe a hundred percent of teachers during their math instruction. The leading indicator will be that a hundred percent of teachers observed during their math instruction are utilizing a best practice instructional strategy. So once we have another PD session with Brian, teachers will be asked to select a strategy that he's presented and they will record it on a live document and then that will tell us what we need to look for when we go in and do our observations. Our lagging indicator will be the end of year math I ready scores as well as O S A S in grades three through five. And then another action for empowering our students is to monitor monthly student attendance. And so send home any notices regarding their attendance, make phone calls to families, supremely absent students, set up any sort of, sort of support plans that we can to get the kids to school regularly. Our leading indicator will be our current attendance data at the end of this first quarter. And we want to be on track to have seventy percent regular attenders, which would be up from seventy-four percent for the last of, of last year. And then we will also look at the number of chronically absent students from fall of last year to the fall of this year and see if they are decreasing and they're increasing their attendances. And our lagging indicator will be the end of year attendance report.
All right. Our next area from the strategic plan is energizing our team. Our first action is focused around getting feedback from staff, ensuring that they're feeling supported. So we started with our survey rollout, taking the survey data from the fall, or the spring. And we rolled that out to all of our staff and we broke them out into little small groups to get feedback on areas of strength and things we should continue. And then also some of the areas that we scored lower, giving some suggestions for things we can do to improve. And we will be taking that information that we got from staff and stop lighting all of the feedback. So talking about what are some things we can green light and move forward with from their suggestions? What are some yellow light things that we want to be able to move forward with, but we can't at the moment? And then anything that's a red light that we're just not capable of addressing. And so we're going to be sharing that out during our PLC this week to the whole staff. And then we're also making sure to do check-ins with our new employees, a thirty day and ninety day new employee meeting to ensure that they have everything they need, that they're feeling supported and that it's a good, you know, start to the school year for our new staff. And our lagging indicator for those areas will be again, the end of your staff survey, specifically focusing on survey question one, which is that staff feels supported with process of resources. Our second action is talking about instructional practice and professional development. So we are, like Marjorie said, working with our instructional coach, Brian DeWolf, to create some math professional development sessions around best practices, strategies, focusing on encouraging students to take risks and persevere with math. And then we are also doing some professional development around our vision for student learning. And last year we focused heavily on student engagement, which was a part of our vision. And this year we're going to be continuing with student engagement, but then also adding in the component of students feeling confident and comfortable taking risks with their learning. So to be monitoring that, our leading indicator will be a hundred percent of teachers will be observed using a new instructional strategy in math that they select and we're going to be, you know, scheduling times where we can come in, see that strategy in action, provide feedback to them and hopefully get these strategies as part of their math instruction on a regular basis. And then our lagging indicator will be our end of year I ready math scores. The last action for energizing our team is focusing on our transformative social emotional learning standards. And so our T cell district team is working on providing professional development to the district. We're going to be implementing breakout sessions where we create trainings that are focused on an area of interest that addresses some of the social emotional learning standards. And we are also using Character Strong as our SEL curriculum in the elementary school, so we pop in and check in to see how things are going with that, we've been using that for quite a few years now and, and it's helping to build positive classroom culture. Our leading indicators would be the staff survey where we had them select areas of interest and then we're going to be also getting feedback on those breakout sessions to see if it's meeting their needs, if there's other things they want to be learning about so that we can adjust for the future sessions. And then we are going to also be observing in the classrooms and our goal is that eighty percent of teachers we observe will show evidence of three or more of the vision statements from the five D rubric that support a positive classroom environment and culture. So making sure that those things are in place in the classrooms. And then our lagging indicator is our end of year student survey results and the student survey question that we really focus on for this area is that students feel cared for by their teachers.
All right, and the last area is engaging our community. And a couple of the actions that we're doing we're going to do are make sure that all assessment results from the beginning of this year are shared and reviewed with parents at conferences. And ensure that teachers are communicating any academic concerns before parent teacher conferences. We certainly don't want conferences to be the first time that teachers bring up a concern so that we expect that they're making those, you know, making contact home and to give that information ahead of time. Our leading indicator will be that all families will have received reports with assessment results in reading a map. They will also receive a title one progress report that details their interventions that are being used. The time in intervention, how many days a week, and then of course the progress of the student survey. And then our lagging indicator will be the end of year parent survey results, specifically question three, families will receive feedback regarding student learning. And then we have, we're going to continue positive office referrals, which we started in the spring of last year. And this year we're including a prize wheel where students who have been referred for a positive office referral come in and they get to spin the wheel and then it lands on the prize and they get that prize. And our goal is for the month of October to have thirty positive office referrals. And the, the lagging indicator will be the end of year parent survey results. Families will receive positive phone calls, emails or notes about their child. And we've also set a goal as a school that every child, that each teacher will have reached out to every student's family before parent teacher conferences, for sure and possible. And then finally, the other actions are working with outside organizations to schedule after-school clubs and sending all the information to families about those clubs being offered. Our leading indicator will be to track the number of students who are participating. This year, just this fall, we have a new yoga club and then we have a new art company who's coming and who's doing some fine arts with the kids. And our lagging indicator will be to track the number of after-school opportunities that were provided by outside community organizations and then of course the number of students who participated. Was there just a few, was that right?
How will you know if you're making progress as you're doing the leading indicators? And you, of course, will be doing the survey until the end of the year, how will you, how will you be able to tell if what you're, what you implemented is, is making the kind of progress you want to?
Well, ho- hopefully we'll see improvement with our school goals as far as academics, that more students are reaching benchmark. So that's one of the, of the lagging indicators there, but the leading indicators will be reviewing these each quarter, at the end of each quarter. And then we have to do some sort of pulse check or empathy interviews with our students. We, when we surveyed the parents and we talked, when we rolled out the survey results to parents, they suggested that we do a pulse check, not in January like we had done last year, but maybe in March and call that the end because they felt, they feel like if we send it out in May, it's a lot of things are going on in May, it's a super busy time of year. We didn't get very good participation this last weekend, we had sixty-nine people participate. So we're going to try to send that out a little sooner this year. And that will also give us an idea of how things are, how things are going with those specific indicators on the survey, the parent surveys. Then we can monitor and adjust.
What about relative to your students and your team?
I think with the likes, empowering our students with a lot of those academic goals, it's going to have to be being in classrooms frequently. We do have some ways to progress monitor for reading, especially students who are in an intervention. They get progress monitored like twice a month on their reading. As far as like other students who aren't in interventions, it's going to be being in the classroom, seeing the, the level of instruction, providing feedback to teachers.
Just subjective from their, their career.
Kind of night apple thing too. I think that is the purpose of our short improvement cycles. It's like what you're saying, we don't want to wait till the end to see how we did, right? We want to be looking at it all along the way and so that's why on our scorecard, we're checking those, we're looking at our goals, did we meet our goals? Did, do we want to keep those goals, do we want to make a different goal? So we're not waiting till the end of the year and saying, how did we do, we're doing progress checks all along the way.
We do, we do have a wake-up I ready as well, so we're not waiting till the end of the year for academic checks for all kids, but this is just for our first quarter and we do that one at the same.
Yeah, I was going to ask that personally, I ready, you guys get the information back really quickly, right?
Yeah, right away.
So we do that three times a year.
Yeah.
And then to monitor their reading, like Laura said, if you are intensive and need a lot of support, we progress monitor them every week.
Yeah.
And the kids who are strategic and kind of right, right in between, not quite to grade level, we, we do, we monitor them after two weeks. And then we have intervention review meetings every six to eight, sort of.
Have you guys started talking about the state test at all? Trying to get some enthusiasm around that participation?
We have, we've started that the past couple of years and we provide like ice cream party at the end of testing, you know, and we just reward everybody. Because we're going to see everybody out, but we try to kind of pump it up and each year we'll do more and, you know, that's something that we've talked about in admin too, is making sure our teachers are on board and understanding, you know, the importance and significance of the test. And Brian DeWolf, our instructional coach, has some good resources that he's got shared with us, that we can share with our staff that will help them maybe see more of the value in it.
And Character Strong, it's been going for a couple of years now, right? And is it what you guys had hoped for as far as what that program was?
Yeah, it's a good place, yeah, I think teachers over the course of the few years have figured out areas where they can like add in their own spin on things, but it's definitely a good like foundational piece, it gives them all the resources that they need. Yeah, and just being consistent throughout the whole school.
Yeah, right.
You're using the same verbiage and the same expectations and learning about the same after-trades every month, so.
Do you have any other questions?
It's a safe landing. Thanks.
Thanks.
Hello.
All right, we're gonna talk about the middle school. Wanna go back, Max? I could tell them with a picture.
There's a picture. That's just our first whole school assembly and the cheer team performed, which is a brand new cheer team, so just another activity for our kids to be involved in. And we know that kids that are involved do, do well. So it was really exciting to see how new girls signed up for that this year. And they were very brave and performed. Just a big deal at middle school.
Yeah.
To get in front of your whole school and perform. So that was really fun. Okay, so our first area of our strategic plan, then we're gonna go over empowering our students. And the top one is for our academic goals, math, both math and reading. We've been doing, really for the, this is our third year with our instructional vision and it's not changing because we really feel it's, it's what we need, what, it's aligned with what we want to work on and what we believe our students need, which is engagement with their learning and taking ownership of their learning. So looking at assessment practices that help kids really understand where they are, where they need to go, and how it is that they get there with our assessment feedback, as well as really making sure that kids are actively engaging their learning versus like passively, right? So looking at raising the rigor of those tasks. And we have an instructional toolkit that we've provided to all of our teachers with common strategies that are aligned to those goals. And so we're doing just, you know, continually doing professional development and then collaboration with our teams on implementing those things. So that is aligned to Leanne and I's walkthrough tool. So when we go into classrooms, we are looking at the, like the percentage or like how many students are actively engaged in, in the learning. And specifically talking about their learning, that's something we've been working on, talk strategies. And so last year, we saw sixty-three percent of our walkthroughs. We saw like a structured talk opportunity and we're hoping to see like more like seventy-five percent this time. And I, and just to say, I wouldn't expect a hundred percent, because sometimes our walkthroughs are short and, you know, they might be doing like a quiet activity during that time, so. Yeah, but we definitely wanna see more of that. Our lagging indicator for our academic growth are both I-ready but also OSAS. It's just lags a little bit further behind with the fall release of the data. And then also the final percent of observations at the end of the year. And we hope to see growth throughout the year as well, that we saw those strategies being used. Specifically within the BD, we're also sharing like, you know, reading strategies, writing strategies. We're really building like an entire toolkit for our teachers. And so that's something that we're hoping to see the kids explore. Like I spoke about earlier, our other big part of our vision is our students taking ownership of their learning. So this year, we expanded our work on standard space assessment. So it started with a few subjects last year, about half of our teachers were doing it. And then this year, all of our core teachers are using that method of grading in core classes as well as technology and health. So really just our electives and P E are the only ones that haven't converted over to that system yet. It's just, it's, it's a lot of work, so we're just kind of chipping away by course. And what that does is it gives students and parents a very clear idea of which standards they're struggling in and which ones they're doing well in. So even on parent view, it has like, like a graph. You know, you're doing well on this standard, this standard is, is like lower, so they can understand not just what their grade is, but what the learning is that's reflecting that grade. And we're also using practices in the classroom to help students continue to try if they don't get it the first time. So we're separating behavior and academic reporting so that if they try again and they get it, their grade will reflect that versus saying, oh, you know, like, it was late, so it stopped points. Well, this is a behavior, not an academic outcome. So that, this is, this is a pretty deep, you know, I can't cover the entire philosophy in like a couple of minutes, but that's just a few of the concepts of student-based grading. And so as a staff, we're working on those together and I'm really excited to see where they, where they go. We already were kind of seeing more kids saying like, oh, I wanna come and retake that test or I will redo that essay because I know that my effort on that is going to pay off for my grade or be reflected there. So we also, when we're in classrooms, are observing those kinds of practices, like are the teachers using rubrics? So their, their feedback is clear. Are they giving, you know, opportunities for self and peer assessment? Those are the things we're kind of looking for when we're in observations and stuff. Again, kind of hoping to see more often evidence of those practices in our observations. And again, that should impact student learning, because the research shows that these brain practices are what have shown to help kids, kids learn. And then finally, we want our students here, so we want to make sure we're, we're monitoring and improving attendance. Last year, our October result at the end of quarter one was seventy-seven percent of our students are regular attenders as of October, so we're hoping to move that up to eighty-three percent this year. And then our end of year regular attendee goal is eighty-one percent, and that is I think it's five percent more than it was last year. It's improved over the last two years, which is hoping to keep, keep growing now. Okay, so for our action, for our first energizing team one is to round with our staff as well as do our survey rollout. And this is really just to give them opportunities, like different ways to give us feedback so that we can address their needs. At the end of October, oh, sorry, just to say a little bit more of that, we did the survey rollout. That's like when we get their feedback on why they answered those questions. And then we're taking that and telling them like, these are things we can change, these are things we need to work on. Or maybe this is something that we need to think about more, like talk about more if we are able to change that or not. And so that's gonna happen at our next whole group meeting. And then we have our, we're gonna, we are gonna do a staff full check survey at the end of October, just because we, our results of our staff survey did go down last year. And so we really wanna make sure we're on the right track this year to hopefully adjust. And then our next action is around providing quality, high-quality professional development on research-based engagement and assessment practices. I spoke to that a little bit in the previous slide, but I think it wouldn't be fair to like expect, expect teachers to be doing these, all these new practices if we weren't supporting them in doing that. So that's our action. We, at the last PD session, which was just last week, we started using a PD exit ticket, just like a quick two-question survey for our teachers so that they could give us feedback on their experience with the professional development. We want it to be valuable to them. So that's our question, is it valuable to you and do you have any suggestions for next time? So that we can be responsive to, like, you know, we have so little time together as a staff, we want it to be really valuable to them. And so that, that actually gave us some really good feedback that we can use for our next session. And then the lagging indicator is the staff survey question. I feel supported with good processes and appropriate resources to do with that.
And then our last action in this section is around our new staff. And we have two new teachers this year, so it's a pretty small sample size. But we're also doing the thirty and ninety day interviews that the elementary school talked about. So our goal and our result for the leading indicator was a hundred percent positive response from new staff. And that's what we ended up hearing from them. And these interviews are really valuable because they just give us some insight as to like, how, how is the teacher's expectation that we like laid out for them in the interview process lining up to their lived reality, right? And we're feeling really good that right now that there's alignment around that. And then we'll, we'll interview again at ninety days and hope for satisfaction scale that's in the positive, you know, our goal is seven, but we're really hoping, you know, that people are feeling really positive about being here and about their, their choice to come and work for us.
Well, so the next section for engaging our community is around communication with parents for the first one. Last year, we saw like a very tiny gain in our parent survey on this question of I receive positive phone calls, emails, or notes about my child. And, and so we were like, okay, you know, what we did last year didn't work great to improve that outcome. We sent postcards last year to all families. And so we just kind of went back to the drawing board, like what's something that's gonna feel maybe more authentic or more timely or maybe be, be more efficient for our teachers so they can send out more of them throughout the year? Maybe just that one postcard's not like landing when they're getting out this survey. Not that that was the only positive communication we had, but it was our one system. So this year, we came up with a different tracking system where we are in every grade level team meeting, we're making a plan, like who's gonna send to which families a message, and then they kind of follow up with like, okay, I sent it at this time. It was in this form, like an email or a phone call, so we made it more flexible to hopefully feel more authentic. And then we also created a, actually Leanne created, a positive communication toolkit. So we have, you know, like sample language and different like traits that we could highlight for kids just to give teachers more ideas on creative ways to like recognize students and some good language around that. So we're hoping that we'll get a higher volume of communication out this year and have it feel really meaningful to them.
And then our final action in this area is to, we just wanted to look at our parent teacher conferences over the past few years and figure out, you know, what's working there and what isn't. Our families finding value in our format and in the conferences themselves. And one thing we found last year is that, you know, we're, we're not getting all of our families into conferences. So we're gonna try a little bit of a redesign to the structure of our conferences this year. Generally, it's essentially like seven hours of arena conferences where families can just drop in and talk to teachers. We're just gonna shorten that by about an hour and a half, and we're gonna take that last hour and a half of conferences and divvy up all of the families that weren't able to make it to conferences and assign them to teachers to make some phone calls, just to reach out to those families and say like, hey, we're glad that your kid's a student here, here's what we're seeing with your child. Do you have any questions or concerns that you'd like us to pass on to the teacher team? Just, you know, in an effort to engage as many families as possible in that, you know, just in that process and in those conversations about their students. So our goal is to reach out to seventy-five percent of families. Looking at last year's conferences, about fifty percent of families came in during that time. So we're hoping to increase that by about twenty-five percent. And then the lagging indicator is that in the three-year survey that parents, you know, they're receiving feedback regarding their child's learning here. Any questions, Brad?
I've got a couple of questions. One, relative to when the parents, engaging with parents and of course also parent teacher, how do you get feedback on what the parents want to hear from you? Is, is there some way to get a fix on what your average or a big chunk of parents would like to see?
Yeah, that's a good question. I, I feel like, well, so we do have free-form comments on the survey as well as the multiple choice Likert scale questions. And so we do, we do hear, like, we have read, you know, quite a few comments related to communication on those. So that's one way. But we also just in our conversations with parents that we have regularly on the phone or whatever, you know, like, we have a practice of kind of really leading with questions and listening, make sure parents are able to voice, you know, what they, what they want. So I'd say this, this one is not just about the mechanics of what we're doing, but also how we speak with parents. And, and so that's kind of a little bit of a shift that we made this year is talking in more detail with staff about how to engage parents when we have these conversations versus just saying, like, make this number of calls or make this number of contacts. It's more about like, what is this, what is this communication look like? I think we can also look to the research, like, you know, parents want authentic, specific feedback, not good job or a joy to have in class, like those kind of standard report card comments you often get in your like your synergy system. So I'd say it's a combination of those two things.
Another, I'm curious about relative to the words engaging and ownership. Are you using those words in terms of what you want to do with students or what you want to see from the students?
We are using practices that promote those things, like, like strategies in the classroom. And we should see those things, we should see evidence of those behaviors in the student, right? If the student is engaging in self-assessment, they're taking ownership of their learning. They're, they're, they're actively trying to figure out, is this thing meeting the expectations of my teacher? Did I, did I do a good job or do I need to revise them? So there are concrete strategies we could do to promote that practice with the students.
So you were trying to, to find things that cause them to want to engage?
For sure. Yeah, right. Because how can we learn if they're not engaged in their learning, right? That's like the base level of learning is to be in the act of learning. That's what, you know. But, but then it's, it's beyond that, right? Because if what you're asking them to do is low level, well, then it's not, like, they're still not gonna be getting the outcome we want. So we have to have like rigor associated with that engagement. So we've been doing a lot of work on like cost's levels of thinking, right? Getting students up to those higher, higher levels of thinking, like evaluating, analyzing, summarizing versus just recalling facts. And then the ownership piece of like, it's not my, you know, it's not the teacher's job to do the practice for me. I have to do the practice, right? Like, we've majorly reduced the like basically homework's worth one percent just so we could like, it works in parent view, so parents can see whether they're doing the homework or not. But really, the homework is, you know, practice, practice as much as you need to do well on your assessment. And so we're helping them see how their behavior leads to their outcomes. That's that ownership.
So the goal that you're choosing for is for them to get interested in getting good grades, obviously.
For sure. Yeah, right. And that actually takes a lot of like social emotional learning work, right? How do we help motivate our kids, help them feel safe, like they can belong here so that they can engage, so that they can take ownership of their learning. It's kind of like a step-by-step process.
Is there any connectivity there or should, I don't know if there should be, I'm just curious. Is there any connectivity there to any conversations or experiences they have during the year in terms of kind of their future, their, their career orientation, their long-term interests, like this kind of thing? Is that connected to any of this?
Yeah, I, I mean, we're often talking with our teachers about connecting back to the real world and relevance and like career learning. Like in their technology class right now, they're doing a drone unit and they're actually like researching careers that use drones and how they use drones. That's just like one example, I think of. This student, that thing?
It is, it triggers, that's a topic that triggered me because of the many, many people that have worked for me at different levels. I've realized over the years that the most universal limitation to people reaching their potential fulfillment is their own image of what that could be. That's a hard thing to crack if it didn't start early. And it's a hard thing to get started because everybody's different.
Yeah.
I was curious.
I'd say like positivity and like real world connection are your two biggest things to get kids motivated, right? Like, if they don't think they can do it, they might not try. So we have to like help them see that they could be successful and the match.
Thank you.
So just kind of feeding up on Will's first question about how to get feedback from the parents. It seems like at conferences, you could actually go in there and have a list of, of questions maybe that you could ask the parents and kind of take answers and actually get real world kind of feedback.
That would be nice.
And probably in person, it's so, I mean, nobody's gonna, a lot of people fill out surveys, but the problem is you're not gonna get the bulk of people
Yeah, yeah.
survey. And I feel like that communication is so much more honest and anyway.
I like that idea. We were actually working with you about having our own tables this year. Or at least trading off banning an admin table and that would be like a question we could ask. Yeah, I like that.
I have like most curiosity about this kind of standard-based assessment evaluation. So, I mean, I've always kind of struggled with the, the reason why we allow students to retake a test. And I totally understand the, the, like, maybe. Um and I totally understand um the the like, maybe they just didn't get a concept and they can go back and learn it. And I'm all about them like doing that and improving it. Do you see kids coming in with the more of the attitude, like maybe it doesn't matter how I do the first time?
Uh no, not typically. And I and I taught this way for ten years myself, and it's not a typical response. Because um generally, you're not actually, that shouldn't be the first check is the first time to the test. You should have some quizzes before that.
Yeah.
And and so like, our process really builds throughout the time leading up as well. So there's practices you can do, like, for example, I actually didn't have my quizzes for a grade. Like, and they would just rate it themselves. And if they weren't sure how they did, I could help them. But but I was like, yeah, I'm like, I know this stuff. You're the one that's trying to figure this out. So like, assess yourself. How are you doing? What do you need to do to be ready for the test? And if and if, you know, maybe a couple of kids might be banking on that retake, but those are kids that are also like generally. Already pretty unsuccessful in school. And and you kind of need to like help them see that there is a different way to experience tests.
Yeah.
And then the retake kind of, that that helps, that helps kind of change their idea of, oh, actually, I can do well on a test. I don't have to fail every test. That's enough. So then you actually get more motivation for the first one later.
And and just typically, are you seeing more of the kind of? Students who just wanna get their grades up to like a hundred percent instead of at the lower ones or?
Not at all, actually. It's really mostly the kids that need to improve. Yeah, and because there is such a huge range and students of like speed at which they learn. Right? Like, you know, children with disability, you know, disabilities might take, just they might might need a lot more practice and more time for something to click. So we also see with a real like strong implementation of standards-based assessment, students with disabilities should like. Typically pass their classes more often because there is this like, like it doesn't matter as much that they like learn it exactly by this date. Right? We can be more flexible with them for their individual needs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just kind of touched on the, you know, middle school and thinking about ownership or that transition from parents. Uh and kids that owning what they're doing. So I commend you guys on trying to get students to recognize that their grades are their grades and not their parents' grades. And you know, this that ownership and and how how well they can, you know, go, you know, how far. So hopefully that occurred, it's right there with them. Um I have a question on the thirty thirty day ninety eight interviews. You guys also uh as part of the um when you're interviewing those teachers, if they have experience. Um not only are they meeting our expectations or did we, you know, provide the correct standard or what they're what to expect? But are we also trying to, you know, what worked well from there, you know, now that they've been here for ninety days? Are we giving feedback on how we could possibly improve if something was working well out there at where they were previously?
Yeah, I think that question is built into the ninety days.
Okay.
It's around, you know, are there procedures or structures or things that you've seen work well somewhere else that that we should look into?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's also questions about like the onboarding, like like were they supported with the transition? Like, you asked that, like, was supported with that? Yeah, yeah, because I mean, onboarding is like so complex. Actually, we never have enough time, you know, or as much time as we wished we did.
Yeah, I I just another way to get feedback from outside, like what we're doing and maybe there's something that we're missing. Leslie Buchanan?
No, I I've been through it. I would listen to all that testing that we've done with our kids and. And uh, yeah, I love what I love what you're doing.
Thank you.
So what what happened last year? You you said that there was kind of a dip in.
Our staff survey?
Yeah.
Well, um I we talked to them, I they they, it was a really interesting response to that. Because they were surprised that it went down, like, or at least that was like kind of the. They were surprised by the number that in that it went down. Um I think they explained that behavior was really tough in the spring with a. A group, a group, and it was wearing on the staff that we had just some really challenging situations um with behavior. Um so that that.
The eighth grade?
Was part of it.
Eighth grade?
Yeah. Um and then also, a a third of our staff didn't answer the survey. So that, you know, when you have this small of a staff as we have, that can really swing the numbers. So um I think that maybe we had a higher percentage of the staff who just had had a harder year. Being the ones that answered the survey last year partly. But I also like, I'm not gonna discount that that was a hard experience for them. And so like, we have adjusted a little bit the way that we're kind of. More, we're just really trying to be more proactive this year, being, you know, Anna and I have really committed to being out in the building much more to support behavior. Um you know, middle school is the time of the more frequent behaviors that we see in children's development. Um and so, yeah, that was part of it too.
One more to go.
Thank you.
Hold on.
All right. Uh we have a few pictures here uh around three topics that you've heard from the other schools, so engaging our community. We had a big uh for drag year school, which is the biggest fundraiser for our parents association. Um and also something they've started doing last couple of years is called the Braves Marketplace, uh where they invite vendors in to do things. So a big community event uh that we had this fall that was really positive. Empowering our students, I have a picture there, uh one of our students who was just selected for a semifinalist for the National Bear Scholarship. Um and so definitely wanting to promote that. And then also just having some fun, um that's a a picture of some uh staff from a few years ago. Mister Posture still had a hint to his hair.
Right, I'm still wearing that.
Uh so just fun, kind of uh engaging our community as well and all sorts of. Uh the high school, uh you you've heard it's kind of the same thing, so around empowering our students. Um we, something uh Brian has been great about trying to promote and and get more opportunities for our students. To experience learning opportunities outside of our walls of Banks High School. And so tracking off-campus learning opportunities, uh Mrs. Van de Couver, uh who works in our library is. I I use the term like a pipe diaper, uh kids just gravitate towards her and she's uh an amazing partner in everything she does. So she set up with Washington County Chamber of Commerce, these different field trips. I think we've uh have our second one this week. And uh this one's around public service last, uh I think two weeks ago, it's manufacturing. And so they get to go see these different um companies will come that the uh local Hillsborough Chamber of Commerce. Puts together all these companies and all these people in these different fields of work. And they just sit down and talk to kids from all over, Glencoe High School, Liberty High School. And they allow us to kind of join in as banks. Um and so it's mostly Hillsborough High Schools and then us. Uh but we have more students than Glencoe or Liberty or Hillsborough, opposite of these uh that are way more uh students than our school. So uh it's been a really positive experience and kids get to go learn about these jobs. Find out if they're interested, what kinds of opportunities there are for internships, or what kinds of uh studies they need to do after high school, and be prepared for those jobs. How much it pays, all sorts of things in there. They usually give out some prizes and things like that, which kids get really excited about. Uh but we're trying to increase those, uh and we've also increased the number of opportunities through things like FFA and FAD. Uh we have some students who are interested in journalism with our FAD group of broadcasting, uh that are also going down to University of Oregon. Um for the school broadcast, uh school of journalism, where they're putting on a one-day event, um that our kids also get to go see at campus. Besides PCC, which we're really excited about. So um that would be our leading indicator is tracking that data, how many students are going. And then as this year goes on, we start targeting specific students, especially upperclassmen who have yet to go on one of those trips, to try to make sure that everybody's attending these. And uh last year, we had over half of our student body who attended one of these events, and our goal is to continue to increase that. Um our attendance committee is something that we're working on, uh improving attendance, and that is our counselors and Mr. Buchanan. And um something that we tried last year for the first time was uh giving out some awards. So we advertised this and asked the kids like what types of awards or incentives would would you guys be excited about? Um mostly young men, asked for like headphones or Bluetooth speakers and like kind of tech equipment type stuff. Uh they also wanted some like gift cards for like Ninja Bowl or some of the local coffee shops, things like that. And so we're doing that again coming up. Uh for those couple of weeks that we did that competition, the students really got into it. And I think our seniors had the highest attendance out of all four grades, which is usually not the norm. Um but they really got it, we're gonna try to do that more this year. We did it once last year, we're gonna do it throughout the year at least each quarter. Um it was a little bit like we're paying students to go to school, but uh for for a fifteen-dollar set of headphones or something like that, if that helps improve attendance, awesome. Uh so we will track that, we'll have data from before the competition, we'll have data for the two weeks during the competition. And hopefully, like last year, we see our attendance increase. At the end of the year, uh last year, our attendance, we had sixty-six point five percent of our students were regular attenders, or attended ninety percent of them. Um there's a ton of students who are just under that ninety percent mark, so like those students from eighty to eighty-nine percent. If we could move those students into that regular contender, we could be well above seventy-five percent. Um so that's kind of the students that we're targeting, is those students who are so close, who just miss. Uh the rules have changed where now we send them to field trips or athletic events, things like that, that doesn't count against them. But when they take a week off for elk hunting or they go on the family trip vacation, there there's still things where they miss a certain amount of time. So it equals out to, in order to be considered regular contender, you can't miss more than one full day every two weeks. So that's our our goal to move that right there. Uh we're trying to improve our student recognition. Um we got some information on the feedback, as as everybody's mentioned, these surveys. Um a lot of our surveys kind of over our overall scores, then some individual ones went down as well from students, from parents and from our staff. And so a lot of the things that we're talking about tonight are based on those that survey data that we're trying to increase. And target new specific actions to raise those areas. So uh we fast forward to the end, uh I believe learning is important and I have opportunities to be successful. We wanna do more of promoting uh academic success. There are a lot of times on our social media or in the newsletter, we're talking about how good the football team's been doing. And hey, this, you know, girls' basketball made it to the state finals. It's a lot of sports-type stuff or the play or extracurriculars. And so we're purposely trying to make sure that we're highlighting student successes throughout the year and doing something like a student spotlight. So uh for example, the 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 picture we had at the beginning there, Elizabeth Huntington, uh National Bear Scholarship, semifinalist, that's awesome. And we wanna make sure to promote that and uh make sure the students can see the different opportunities that they have if you apply yourself, so. Um and then we're also going to survey our students, um somewhat like a student interview. We call this like an empty interview, but it's more like a Google form or survey. And our goal is to have a seventy percent participation rate, and we wanna hear from students what they feel like they need to be successful. And and so just time-wise and resource-wise, to sit down with four hundred students and each individual student. Um between our counselors or admin, that'd be difficult. So we're gonna start with a a a quick survey that we ask teachers to do in study labs. And try to get our participation up. And we wanna hear uh what would help students feel like they belong at Banks High School. That was one that we want to improve. As far as energizing our team, um so we we did a survey rollout with our high school staff. And shared the data from the surveys of where we were in our scores. Uh and we asked feedback from staff on what ideas we need to start doing, what things we need to stop doing. And what things maybe we need to adjust uh to help them. We're we're taking their feedback uh that they gave us in that, the the staff meeting and implementing that throughout the year in our scorecard. So using their feedback, make sure we set goals around those things. Um and that, uh I I don't have all of the 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 questions written down, but the first four questions on our staff survey and the overall survey meeting. We're hoping to approve, and I I think some of the other schools mentioned, like, I have the resources to do my job, I get enough feedback, to know how well we're doing, things like that. Uh we want to improve. We're also doing leader rounding uh throughout the year. That's where we meet with uh staff. It's a short five, ten-minute meeting, but just to check in, how are you doing? How are things going? What can we do to help you? Uh and the the specific question that we wanna ask, gonna have two of those, is how's the cell phone policy going? Uh we feel like it's going pretty good. We only get a couple of phones up in the office each day, uh four hundred students, where it feels like a big change, but it's going pretty well. Uh but also, what types of feedback or how often do you want feedback, each employee? So that was one of the questions where the data went down with the, I I get the feedback I need to to do my job. So we wanna make sure that we hear from them on an individual basis. What types of feedback do you need and on what type of frequency, to make sure the teachers feel like they're getting what they need. And that'll be our leader round. Um you've heard about the thirty ninety day interviews. Uh we have two new teachers this year, and we have one that's here uh for a long-term subposition here to to start the year. So we're saying three teachers we're gonna meet with, and um we wanna, same thing. Is your experience matching up to what you expected after the interview and when you started the job? You have the resources you need, and I think one of the important ones that we wanna highlight is, is there anybody that's been especially helpful to you? And we wanna make sure to talk to that person and let them know, like, thank you, you've made an impact, you're helping in whatever that area that is. So uh they also get to recommend one of their peers that has been helpful for them. And we'll follow up the same way uh with the ninety day interviews. One of the questions we like to ask, um it's not quite hiring season, but we ask them, is there anybody you think or you know, do you think would be a good fit at Banks? If we can help recruit some more amazing teachers here to Banks. And then uh some performance conversations, some of the work we're doing with Studer is looking at um what level our different educators are at. And are they a high performer, high solid, low solid, or low performer? And making sure that we're having those conversations with them, uh and giving them feedback to improve. And um that's again around feedback. We wanna do that at least each quarter for each teacher. And then for engaging our community, we uh wanna increase the amount of newsletters we're sending out to high school. There's always a lot of events happening at the high school, making sure people are aware of those. Um making sure parents have the information they need uh for all the events at the high school and what's going on with their students. We are partnering with our high school parents association and looking at different opportunities for student recognition. Uh one of the things that they um would like to implement this year was honoring the students who scored a three, four, or five on the AP test. And so doing like a guard sign, my student got a five, you know, you've seen the bumper, so my students can honor some. Some sort of recognition for those students um who did an outstanding job on their AP scores. Um that was an idea from the Parents Association and they're gonna fund that. And so we're giving them the list names, we're gonna send a uh kind of a congratulations note or a letter. And uh get those, they should be out this month to all those students. And um we're trying to increase with like schedule, I mentioned, like student recognition. Uh where we're doing a student spotlight every couple of weeks and then also uh just engaging our community through that method. I know I'm guilty of this as a parent, I get a lot of emails. Um but I get the parent, I get the the email from my kid's school and hey, this and and I'm not always great about reading those entire newsletters or emails. Um nothing against my colleagues back here, um just we're busy, we're all busy. Uh but I think when we, when we look at the social media following that we've gotten over the last. About ten years or so, there's thousands of people who follow that, even people who don't live in our community anymore, but alumni, parents, community members. And we found that that's a great way to just keep people in the loop on what's going on at the school and celebrate all the positive things happening. Um rather than just randomly doing it, we're trying to schedule those out to make sure we're doing different ones each week, uh and been doing that so far this year. That is the high school.
So just kind of, I I I don't know exactly how many AP classes we're offering this year. You could start with that.
Yeah, we dipped a little bit, um like Mister King, for example, taught AP psychology. And so when he left, the person who came in is not trained in AP their first couple of years of teaching, so we're offering just like a normal. So we don't have AP psychology.
Yeah.
In the past, we had AP, human geography.
Okay.
That was a really popular one, and we're hoping to add that back next year. Uh but we have had AP econ and an AP gov that alternate each year.
Yeah.
So students have a couple of chances to take those. Um we have AP lit and then uh AP bio and AP environmental science. Switch each year, same thing.
Sure.
Uh alternate, and then uh AP calculus, which is AB or PC. I think last year we had one student take AP base PC.
So I I mean, obviously, the kids don't have to take the task, the standardized test at the end of it, right?
Yeah.
Um and I know just my experience with my kids, it's like. Um not all of them wanted to take the calc exam, but I'm just wondering like, is there, I mean, I really appreciate like. Recognizing the kids that that do take it and trying to figure out how we can encourage more to want to take it. That almost has to start at the beginning of the year, right? Uh because it's it's a long process to get there. I'm just wondering if there's something else, financial or some without the, like, really.
I definitely think there's some the some test fatigue at the end of the year.
Sure.
Um, especially for our juniors. Uh, but we we had one young lady who took five AP classes last year.
Wow, did she take all the tests?
She did. She did very well. Um, but that that is amazing. Like, that is unbelievable. Getting a's and a l's, pass all of that, like, you can get the college credit, things like that. Um, but. There's there's two things with that. One, we're not supposed to use the results from the AP test as some sort of like evaluation to teacher or something like that. Uh, but we also have to watch, we don't want teachers saying, oh, you you probably shouldn't take this. We want our scores to be high or something like that. So we we want all the students to take the test. Best of their ability, however, they can just say, I'm I'm good. Like, I don't I don't want to do that. But there are, college board does have some things where they have to sign up and they have to say, I'm I'm taking this test.
Mm-hmm.
And there is a little financial incentive or pressure that you've already paid for the test, so you should almost take that. So.
Yeah.
Can we make you sign up well in advance? I I would say that a majority of our students who are taking, it's gotten a little bit better. Um. Trying to also talk about the like the S back and the state tests. One thing that we've done is trying to promote that for this year's freshmen. It will be a graduation requirement, like it's phasing back in and unless somehow the the. Created a law or change, but for our current freshmen, they will need to pass the state test their junior year for essential skills in order to earn their high school diploma. Uh, we've added that you have to pass the state test your junior year in order to be honors diploma, valedictorian, salutatorian. Bringing those things back in. So trying to increase that. I know. Like when COVID happened five years ago, it was like, okay, but we we literally can't have you come in to take a test to get to the sponsor. You know, we can, there's no place for students to be to take that test. So it it all went away, and I think we're slowly bringing that back and that assessment piece and the importance of that.
I think that's fantastic.
It's, yeah. It's a process.
And just going back to the AP and the scores and stuff, I mean, I realized like, we don't want to punish a teacher for. Like if the kids are getting threes or twos or were not taking the test, right? But it does give you an indication about where you're at.
Yeah.
In relationship to kind of the rest of the country, right? Because it's um, it's a standardized test at that point. And I think there's value in in using that as an assessment, maybe not at the teacher, individual teacher level, but at the program level, right? I mean, like if they're taking, I mean, calculus is like a whole nother beast, but I think biology is probably a good readout. Because you've you've started learning biology as a kindergarten, right? And.
Yeah.
Um, are we kind of? Uh, where are we at? You know, I think I think that's a valuable tool um to really assess the K through twelve program. As a whole, instead of just looking at the individual teacher, because a lot of that stuff they could have, could have, maybe should have picked up in seventh grade.
Yeah.
Um, and if they're not, then I mean, this is all foundational stuff. So you really have to have those special blocks to kind of. See, and I think I think the AP tests are really, since we're not often taking the standardized test. And the standardized test, you know, I I don't, I've never taken. The Oregon one, maybe it'd be interesting to do that, but I don't know how rigorous it is or, um, I mean, I'm sure that's. I don't know what that involves.
That's, uh, there's not as much mystery with the the AP test. They give you the score, if I can get it, one, two, three, or five.
Yeah.
And. You see how your school did compared to the state, compared to the national average.
Mm-hmm.
No, not average, but national scores. So it it is good. The the state test, we don't always get the data back super quickly. Um, and you have this number that you have based on how they did on eighteen questions, something like that, on the science test, but yeah. And we we've had an experience the last several years of so few kids taking it. It is a very, very helpful. Oftentimes, our higher achieving students are our first top down.
Uh, just something that was brought to middle school with the um, the 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 challenging year that they had last year is that something that's ongoing here. Like our ninth graders.
Yeah, I, there's there's been some highs and lows. I think, um. As far as student management and things like that, we we started using, it's ever helped us last year uh create like an online. Like a, the way we report referrals. So it's all tracks. We have last year as a baseline. We're definitely well below that where we were last year as far as the number of referrals. So I'd say that gets better. Uh, but there have been some bigger concerning behaviors for sure uh to start the year.
And we're making sure that our teachers have everything that they need to to kind of deal with these issues.
So I think that's, that was the most popular uh class for the T cell coming up, where it's uh teachers are able to sign up for, it was around classroom management. I think the most teachers looking for strategies and resources for that, for sure.
Thank you.
But I'll I'll balance that with, we just had homecoming week last week, and I think we've had more kids participating in goofy dress up days of the floats and all the thing, like. There's a ton of school spirit. There's kids are excited. There's a lot of really positive things going on. Uh, so I don't want to pay a picture of like it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's.
And I heard it was in the barn, which is really. Good for the last ride.
All right. Well, thank you to the. French folks uh for for coming in. Uh, Max, you can uh kill the slideshow. We don't have any more required slides now. Um.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so we're on on time for board members. We need to take a break. You're kind of getting disinterred on your own, please, for a minute. So each year. You all. Are evaluating me. Um, and it's it's on two things. Right? One is on a set of criteria. I'm just gonna kind of stand for a minute, because that was a lot of sitting, but bottom down, we did a good job. Um. One's on a set of criteria you evaluate me against, and another is on goals. Um, I want to talk about the goals first, and that's what's in the handout. So. I apologize, I forgot about page numbers, but the first, the second page after the strategic plan. The the first page after this strategic plan is just a reminder of the process. This always comes up quick. And so we'll be, you'll be getting evidence of against these goals starting really in, you know, January and February. Hopefully all along the way, you'll see things. And if there's ever questions about progress, you're always welcome to ask. But it's just, um, built into the statute that that by March fifteenth, so during the March board meeting, is when the superintendent's evaluations deliver. The first three goals, so this is now the third page, the header says superintendent goals, all goals that uh evidence of progress are attained by March of twenty twenty six. Um. The first three goals, I I've had annually now, this is going into the third year, with some. Changes to the actual indicators, because where we're making progress, I want to keep making progress. What I mean by indicators is like, it might be the exact same metric. Say fifth grade reading, fifth grade math, but since we've made progress in those, that that metric goes up. But I found that to be helpful to to me and to our leadership team. But there's a few differences in each that I'll kind of go over. So the first one um around positive school culture. We, I'm looking at both our district wide results of the survey, which that really is just all three schools. Rates, right? All put into one. It's not a separate survey, but just all three schools combined. But then for school culture, I'm actually adding in attendance. Um, that that has not been in it previously, but our district attendance is, um. About seventy percent of our students are here ninety percent of the time. And so that means obviously the opposite, thirty percent of our students are here less than ninety percent of the time. Um, I think we can actually get that a a ten percent growth this year. Um, I think Jacob might have been the one to mention, we we have a number of students who are actually close to that ninety percent. So it's it's kind of a weird metric if you think about it, the way we measure attendance. That's not the average attendance rate. But it's not every kid attendance rate averaged together. It's the percent of students who are ninety percent or above. Um. So sometimes we make twenty, thirty percent growth with a kid, but they're only at eighty-five percent, so we don't really get any like official credit. So every summit of indicator are the ones you're evaluating me against, but just like the. Schools, we look at these, I look at these every every um, every quarter. And so, um. For for attendance, one of the things we do is we we talk to kids that we call those empathy interviews. We we engage in conversations with them. Jacob mentioned um positive recognitions, and then we also talk about our pulse check survey. So they're just those one or two questions we ask periodically. So the the second goal, again, identical to the past couple of years, um, increasing proficiency in reading, writing, and math. You saw the schools measure every grade. But as a district, we want to look at those key grades, and not that all the grades are important, but the ones we think about are the transition years. So fifth grade, they'll be going on middle school, eighth grade, they'll be going to high school, and then actually the high school, we look at ninth grade. And then completion, and I'll explain why in a second. I kind of have two things to point out on those. For both literacy and math, K eight, we use iReady. You've heard a lot about that, those, and and I I think Dan and I have been talking about this. I just want to remind everybody, those are standardized tests, and the results are normed across everyone in the country that uses them, but. There there's a bunch of those um publishers, so not every school district in the country uses the iReady tool. But I think there's something like ten thousand schools across the country that do, or some something to to that effect. Um, it'd be tough to see in this, because I know there's a lot of numbers in here, but for both the literacy and math. For literacy, um. I'm adding. OSAS, which is the Oregon State Assessment System. That's the state test. Previously, we've used iReady because this community just frankly values iReady more. Not, I don't know that they're making that, um. Any conscious decision, but since it's their classroom teacher delivering iReady, we get a lot more participation and conversation around it. But it's, we've talked in here, OSAS is becoming a mandatory uh accountability bill tool. So you'll see that in both math and literacy, fifth and eighth grade. When we get to high school, the state exams are not on the accountability bill. Um. Not, not that we're not trying to increase it for a lot of stuff that that like Dan and Jacob were talking about, but for the purposes of the district wide accountability, they're gonna look at two things. One is ninth grade on track, and there's a definition of being on track to graduate at the end of ninth grade, and there's some, um. Um, widely used research out of University of Chicago that suggests. If you have the number of credits, if basically you have twenty-five percent of the credits needed to graduate by the end of your ninth grade year. You you have a, I don't remember the number, but say an eighty percent higher chance of graduating than if you don't have those. So it's a, it's a very strong correlation. It's um directly, it indicates to you if you're set up in ninth grade and you'd like to go to the female line graduate. So, um, we've always had a good on track for graduation rate, but we're gonna try to get up to ninety-five percent this year. And then, um. We're gonna try to, our our on time graduation rate, and I and I want to remind people how tricky that is. Last year, every student still enrolled in our high school graduated on time. Our graduation rate will not be one hundred percent. Because your graduation rate is based on anyone that ever enrolled in your high school, their ninth grade year or later, whether they stay one day or not. And now, if they go and transfer to Forest Grove, they don't count against us. But if we don't know where they ended up going, or if they don't further their education outside of Banks, that counts against us. So there's a lot of ongoing kind of counseling type work that has to be done to get to the hundred percent graduation rate. We do believe as a district, we can actually exceed ninety-five percent. We've touched it before, but we want to maintain it now. And with the size of our graduation classes, like that's only, you know, we can only lose one or two kids that way, or maybe maybe three, I guess, right, to get to get under that. As we, around the eighty-five to ninety student, um. Uh, high school class. Okay, the third goal statement is really about like, this is probably really should be the first goal statement, goal statement three. Because if we're not supporting our team here, and if we're not supporting our people who are not doing our jobs. Um, we need to make sure we are people for first organization. Um, we holistically or globally measure that through surveys. I hope you heard from the principals how often they are working one on one with staff members, how often they're doing what what they call leader rounding. Which is just a slightly more um organized one on one, how we make sure we talk to new employees at least every third, after their first thirteen, their first ninety days. Um, all of those conversations will give us evidence that our staff surveys. Will increase by the end of the year. Again, my goals are globally across the districts, but they build off of the schools. And then goal statement four, this is the new one for this year. It's aligned to our enriching our facilities goal, but frankly, I just wanted to make sure to be fair to like. Demonstrate to you a little bit of what is taking a lot of the time from the superintendents and from the district's office, and that's around, um, the work we're doing with our bond. So. I have three goals, two of them related to bond. One, maintain a projected on time and on budget completion of the oxygen by early winter of twenty twenty six. Maintain an on time and on budget production completion of the high school modernization, which means new high school by September of twenty twenty seven. Opening for the first day of school on September twenty twenty seven. Um, the third one's not directly related to, um. The bond work, of course, but secure um pledge donations of at least one and a half million dollars for the Kellyville replacement. Or with as little, I guess, as rain as we've had this year, we're already at the point where we think we're gonna need to start shutting down Kelly Field just because of its play. Building. Um. This less quantitative goal, of course, it's a little bit more subjective, but we do have a bond oversight committee, we have a bond steering committee, and we have a bond management team. That I'll be using to let me know if we're on track with it. Um, the last piece of this that I want to cover with you, um. So you'll have to rate me on a one to four scale on those goals. You'll also have to rate me on a one to four scale on each of the five components of our strategic plan. They're in the very front of this and what you see on kind of the, I guess, fifth page. Empowering our students, and then there's descriptors. Enriching our facilities, and then there's the descriptors. Energizing our team, engaging our community, and aligning our resources. That's the exact same as last year. There'll be staff surveys that kind of help me self-assess myself. I'll self-assess myself, the staff will assess me. You'll be given a bunch of data. But then Ron was really helping me think about like. All those old criteria you used to use, which were the OSBA and COSA book. And Ron, when I looked at them, I think the reason we didn't find them as useful is because they're really broad. Yeah, they can almost fit into anything. So I put those on the bottom. I don't want you like to forget about them. But I want you, when you're thinking about how I'm engaging our community, am I also demonstrating visionary district leadership? And like, you're not gonna have to quantify that, but that's more just for you to keep in mind. But like, I think these almost line up for all of them. Should I be visionary? I hope I have ethical and professional norms, but if you ever see evidence that I don't, that's your job to call me out on that. Is this inclusive of, do we have an inclusive district culture? Like, I think those things should show up in every piece of our strategic plan. And and then at the very end. There's a couple that are more aligned to just students and team, like instructional leadership. That that probably doesn't land as much in the facilities part of our strategic plan, but it should in the staff and students. So, um, the way this will work is hopefully, if you keep these in mind. You'll be seeing evidence, hopefully you saw evidence of this with our school presentations today. You should see evidence of the work of this. Um, as we get into the new year, you'll get kind of an evidence packet for me, like like you have every year. Of um work that our team has done aligned to each of these things, so you don't have to go and search it out by yourselves. But, um, I'm happy to take any questions, not a big difference from years past, but hopefully that you see how that's aligned with the order of the schools. If there's questions, we can take them. I have to take them. Move on as well. Oh, I'll sit down. I hope that wasn't making you nervous, but. Sit down, I'll go.
Fred, questions for anybody? For Brian on any of this? I'll just add, uh, Dan and I think, uh, were, when we talked to Brian, I don't know, some time ago. About um adjusting the OSBA, formally from what OSBA had provided previously, because it's already great, because Ryan, as you mentioned, is pretty broad. Uh, but that was an, uh, um. A board kind of conversation amongst all board members, that's an appropriate direction that we should be going. So thanks for Brian for including that. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that, you know. We're going, we're we're going towards a strategic plan with this assessment that these items from OSBA also are kind of overlooked, right? Over top of what, like, that and stuff.
Yeah, that's how I see it. All right, Ms. Collins, or talk to us about. The board book, um. You want a project that you can do the. You want to project that you can, but the numbers end up getting pretty small, so.
Uh so, okay, so in September, um we processed our first full payroll of the year. Um once we've run the payroll, we run our calculations again, and then we compare to what we budgeted versus where we were last year. And um overall, our expenses we tracked equals to what we had last year. About two percent higher um. Than we were last year in September, which is about where we want to be. Uh currently, I don't know, our enrollment was down slightly um. We will still be funded. Our funding will still be okay, because it's a head harmless funding situation, we'll still be funded off of um. Well, enrollment was last year, but go ahead, we will need to monitor these numbers so that we can prepare for next year. And any budget crisis that might. Be down possibly, come forward. Uh also, our property tax certification came in this last week. Um if we base our collections on ninety-seven percent collection rate. That appears will be getting a little bit more money than what we had estimated, so we're going to go ahead and um make the adjustment of ODE. Adjust our funding, so we won't have anything bad next year. Um but we'll also be keeping you in the eye, and we'll be able to do that as well, just make sure this stable reading will be. Uh we're currently in the middle of our annual audit, it's going pretty good, I think, I haven't heard too much on, I meet with the auditors this next week. Um all our bank reconciliations, our bank reconciliations are complete, we're preparing to um for our annual meeting for our food service program. And we're. Um just finished, we can't review with the troops as well. Are there any questions?
How many students were down?
Down, not.
Mostly, it's kindergarten, yeah, it's uh Washington County is down, um first rate was down ten, ten percent over the past five years. Those, they, you know, where that started is now being kindergarten, so. Um our our middle and high school actually seem to maybe even up a little bit from where we protect credits are incoming enrollments is, but it's pretty raw. Which is, I think our kindergarten right now sixty-three, does that sound right? The kindergartners. Not sure if that's exactly right, but it's somewhere like that, which.
We have two classes.
Or we have three, and that that sixty number is a tough one. Is it, no, it's less than sixty, it's under sixty, because it's fifty-eight or fifty-nine, so it's right there where you're like. Well, three classes, yeah, you have classes seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, that sounds pretty nice, or nowhere near what we're funded for.
Are we advertising that?
It's it it's, it it may not. It's tricky, Ron, I I don't know. And it's it's not data that's actually even available. We don't seem to have a disproportionate number of kindergartners homeschooled or in online. Like, it it is just a fact for five plus years now, people having less baby than have baby later in life, then that's kind of catching up with us now. Uh but we'll see, you know, we'll we'll monitor, and we're building a thousand and a half, we'll talk about. Not today, though. Sorry, Ken. No, it's a good question, right, we're out of, enrollment's like, enrollment's almost our only source of revenue.
Yeah.
Like talking about kids like the revenue, but um.
Was there any questions for them?
Thanks, Jennifer, thank you. You know what, Max, I mean, I'm like, this this is the presentation from now, the other team, but. All right, yeah, thanks, Max.
Okay, so this report is actually a required report, it is our um integrated programs annual report. I think it's just me. Tonight with this slide. ODE has in the last several years created a. System where all of the grants that we get, they're not competitive grants, but there are grants that uh. The state uses a formula to um fund us, they have taken all of those grants and put them into one. Reporting system, and that is called our integrated program system. So what we do is we track um our spending for all of those grants. In that system, and we also set goals and do evaluation within that system as well. So you do have this slide deck, it's pretty wordy on each of the slides, and we're kind of running short on time, so I'm just going to summarize. Each um slide for you, but if you have questions, I'm happy to um expand on that. So this this slide, like I said, I'll summarize it, it just says that ODE takes six of our grants and puts them into. One system, and within that system, then we answer questions um for accountability purposes. And that, that um is what creates the integrated program system, so. Um Max. Yeah, you can't even see this, so let me tell you about it. So this first one, it asks what things are going well according to the targets that we've set. And one of the um, I guess, big celebrations that we have had recently uh. Is just our literacy instruction and literacy scores at the elementary school. So um we get quite a bit of funding, get funding that power quite a bit as we work, we get funding through like our literacy grant. We um use our funding for training for our staff, so um you've heard Marjorie and Laura talk about every training that they're. Um of their, hey, one and two teachers are receiving and and the benefits that our students are receiving from those, so that's part of. The uh part of what we're using our funding for, and that's one of our things that we're really celebrating right now is literacy at the elementary school. That's one of the things that we, when we provide this information back to ODE. We said this is what you will go it well. The next one um is. Challenges um on our progress, so um, yeah, you can read this slide, which one it is, but um one of the barriers that. That we're struggling with right now is around state testing, so. You've heard Caitlin talk a lot about assessments and the way that we're really looking at our assessments and making sure they're lining up with our learning. Well, we want to make sure that we have a comprehensive assessment system, and part of that has to include state test scores. Um excited is going to be part of the accountability prop uh process in the future. So we're thinking about how to increase um and our number of our students who are taking the test. This um state test, especially at the middle and high school, we're actually doing pretty well at the elementary school, we'd like to bump that up a little bit. But at the middle and high school, we need more of our students to take those state tests, so. Thinking about how to incorporate that and just connecting it with the students, like this really is something that's important. I think we're going to have to get to that place where teachers and students see that it's important. Um and then just letting ODE know, part of what we do is give ODE feedback um around. What are our challenges, one of our, one of our challenges is that um. That piece of the accountability system is really hard, because we don't have students taking the tests. Um. And then. Another area that um. We have felt that we've had a lot of progress in is attendance, and so um we have. We're part of an attendance cohort, and I've talked with you about that before, but we're part of an attendance cohort that across the state. And we've seen great improvements in our attendance as well through our SEL work and through the work in all of our schools, so. That's kind of, those are some of the questions you can ask to Max that we have had to answer for that. I really wanted to show you this, because this is something that we also have to do for um our integrative programs. This is our, um this one in particular is our third grade ELA proficiency, which is will be part of the accountability package. And we set every year, we set growth goals, and we set um. Our target goals, and this is really hard to see, but the dark blue are all of our students. And the green, if you can see it, is um our stretch goal, and I think it's the brown is our our target goal. We're actually above our stretch goal right now um. In third grade ELA proficiency, so when we sit down and and we make our goals, we have to take that into consideration, like. We want to continue to grow, but we also know that we're sitting pretty high right now as far as like the state average, and that's what. Um these goals look at as well is uh the state average.
So am I reading this right, our our goal is to get fifty percent to grade level in third grade? Is that?
This is a five-year goal. So by the time. So this one is actually um. We reset it each year, so it should be, no, our goal is not to get fifty percent, our goal is to have um. What is it, ninety percent of our students in third grade reading a benchmark, so this is just the growth right now that we're expecting based on. The growth that we've already made. I don't know, Brian, help me, am I one?
Yeah, no, listen, you're bringing up here. You're bringing it earlier.
Yes.
No, I mean, we talked about this the other day, Brian, was it, it, how are we interpreting the data? So and we.
So we, if if in, if you saw the school, the schools. Reports. Their goal is like ninety percent.
Yeah.
Right. What this is, is on the accountability bill. Using all the states or all the schools in the state. And the growth that they are seeing on these tests. You you have to set a goal that's aligned to that growth rate. So they they don't say like what you want to do and what are you thinking you need to, they say like. Comparing you to all the schools in the state and like-sized schools. Here's your. Projective growth, and if you don't meet that. That's when they can come in and you start getting sanctions.
Right, so, so if you start super low. And you have a projected growth of, you know. Then you could present a year, five years, you're not going to make your, right?
You're totally correct, we don't get to say much about these. Like, these are ones set by the state, that's like this integrated programs thing um. What they're trying not to do, I mean, I'll put a little bit of logic behind it.
I mean, the the issue is, if you start with a good class and they're like. Just reading unbelievably well, or eighty percent of them are, you're, how do you get to fifty percent?
Will you be glad?
Increase. If there are.
This has any, I I'm sorry, when we were saying growth on this, um I'm sorry, this is different than the growth you and I were talking about.
There's no Y-axis, so I don't really.
Well, there is, the the Y-axis on this, it's not labeled, it's percent, percent meaning proficiency. Percent meaning proficiency.
Right.
The reason it's so low is because it uses data from across the state to set the targets. With our target would be like ninety percent of what we think we can get our district to be able to do.
Yes.
But we we're not allowed, like for this mandatory report Darla has to provide, we're not allowed to say that. Because if if every state said those, every school said those goals that were like thirty, forty points higher than the state average. ODE would be like taking over. Even the, remember, as regarded the accountability bill that just passed in legislature, like that's what this is really related to. Um they would be setting up all our schools for.
So this slide is for late for the accountability.
Hundred percent, a hundred million, zillion percent, that is, that's what the LPG team.
So they obviously come in and we, like, they came in and met with me and said, like, this is what you should set your goal. To be. So this, this is different than when we sit and look at our um data in our schools and we set our district goals.
Right.
This is like, like on some of them, we were, we're already so far above. What the state is, that we can't set that goal to increase anything for. We got, that's how crazy it is, so this is just, this is ODE's reporting system for accountability, yes.
I don't understand how this is actually even useful at the state level, to be completely honest with you, like this, it's not.
Yeah, well, and and to.
And just to be clear, we're not suggesting it is.
Yeah.
No, no, I understand that, I I completely understand that, and I love to hear that our goal is ninety percent.
Yeah. Well, I just, not to be a complainer, but kind of piggyback off that, like. The integrated programs is a ton of work, I can't even tell you how many hours and hours and hours and hours we spend on this. Uh because it. Yeah, it's the the system that they've set up, right, and so. I I I think the celebration, I guess, if I find a celebration in it, is that we are, we are tracking above where. We're looking at schools across the state, that isn't good enough for us.
We're outperforming schools.
Yeah, we're outperforming other schools, but um yeah, definitely not, not good enough for.
But the Mendoza line is pretty low.
So we're on target, and we agree.
We are not on target, no, no, absolutely. Um and then the next one just to show you, and then um. These are our regular attenders as well, and you can see the blue is all of our students, again, we're up above the stretch. Goal as well, so. Yeah, we're, we're outperforming in this area as well, and I just showed these just as examples, um there's also a ninth grade on track. Um. On-time graduation, they were tracking all. All those areas like this, um and then just the next slide, I'll finish it up a bit, so again, you've already seen our strategic plan.
Mm-hmm.
Today, um but I hope that everything that you've heard from all of us today. I I hope that there's been a through line that says like, that this is what we're using to. To make sure that we are improving in a way that we're keeping the promise to our students and our staff and our community to be the very best that we can be. I think that's the end of this, so. Yeah, appreciate you letting me share that.
I just want to say too, like, the the comment that I made about um. You know, the middle school being able to use the conferences as a gauge to to really engage the parents and find out what they would want. And expect um would would be. Throughout the district, right, you have just.
Well, that's cool.
Oh, yeah. So I think.
Thank you.
Um. Thanks, Darla. Um you'll you'll be hearing more about those LPGTs. As the accountability bill becomes the law, and it is going to be confusing, because we'll hear our. School goals, when you think of the normal goals, will be like thirty, forty percent higher. Than what you will see is those. Goals that are based on the growth of the rest of the state, the LPGTs. Um. And we'll, we'll keep going, going through.
I I don't understand why that is so low.
Um, I I mean, we could.
Uh the um. If if the goal is to really improve it, like.
Hey, Ron, I I don't think that this is going to be a widely YouTube video, but I also need to be a little bit careful, um. I I think ODE is going through a significant change there, because. They're, for the past decades, have been a compliance organization. Now this accountability bill is actually apparently forcing them into being a leadership organization, which I know. I can forgive it, which. Which if schools don't meet their goals, OD has to take over and quote-unquote fix them. I I'm not sure, one, where the people in OD are going to come from that can do that. And two, I don't know. Like, they don't have the, even if they actually knew what the magic answer was, which we're assuming they don't know the magic answer, then we'd appreciate them just telling us that. Now, that's not where you tell we were failed. But also, if you, if if they set these numbers that are so much higher than the rates they've already been seeing the past couple of years. Sixty percent, seventy percent of schools in the state would need to go into this specific OD need guidance, and it was, it break them. And that's not a very satisfying answer. But um. There's a lot of problems with the mechanics of this accountability bill.
I I mean, I don't think this is going to be an issue with our school district, everything that I've seen.
Oh.
But if if you are setting the bar so low so that you can only succeed. You have failed.
A hundred percent, so like, again, the goal we're in charge of, don't.
Pretty efficient.
I just want to know, I just want to know which rest of the LPGTs are going to do that.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right, we will. All right, last one, we're going to give you one more report, this is one, it's very easy. Um, this is not a presentation, the report is listed, Division twenty-two. What the twenty-two means is it's in the OARs. It's it's a chapter of the OARs which describes. What we have to say we're in compliance or not compliance to, and it's last year. It's not this school year, it's last year, and last school year, we were in in compliance. With every Division twenty-two related requirement. The report is there, um. We'll see a few of them have been waived, especially around the assessments, um. But there there, I'm not going to go through each one with you, because we are in compliance of all of, with all of them. Sometimes we look ahead to the current school year, do we think we're going to be out of compliance? And um. One was we need an educational equity advisory committee that is now for this year a law, we have had one for a number of years. So we will be in compliance of that next year. Um, some administrative regulations, we are already in compliance with. The only challenge, and I'll talk about this a little when city council's here, but um. I I hope the budgets end up fine, but if budgets don't end up fine. Sometimes we're not able to fully adopt curriculum, I mean, we're currently in a science year, which is the most expensive around. I'm not saying we're not going to, but it it. Um. And I think with that, let's go ahead and skip the optimistic photos on. On a take with that, let's go ahead and skip the optimistic, for those of us in both meetings, or is it Jern and Welk? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody.